Ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, welcome to West Covina City Council meeting. Today is June 2nd. Right now currently 7:00 PM and the meeting. Tonight invocation will be led by Pastor Samuel Martinez from Amazing Love Ministry, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by our council member Shoemaker. And all rights please. And Pastor Martinez, would you please?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Fathers, we gather here this evening. Heavenly Fathers, we face the dual crisis in our country. Father, I pray the prayer of Saint Francis of Assisi. Make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there sadness, joy. Grant me, Lord Jesus, that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console others. Not so much seek to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. And Heavenly Father, we remember the words of George Washington, who said that it is the duty of every nation to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God and to humbly implore his protection and favor. So I pray for the protection of every resident in our city. I declare that no plague comes near our homes in our city. Protect every home in our city. Keep safe our police officers, first responders, and all medical personnel. Strengthen them and give them wisdom. Keep their families safe. I pray for the financial health of every business in our city and that you meet the needs of every person unemployed. For the parents that have school-aged children, grant them wisdom to teach their children and strengthen them as they now have multi-roles to perform. Give wisdom, Heavenly Father, to our national state leaders during the crisis in our streets and the Corona crisis. And give understanding to the doctors and scientists working on finding a vaccine for this virus. Give wisdom now, Heavenly Father. We pray specifically for our mayor, our city council, and all city leaders, including our police chief, fire chief. Grant them wisdom, Father. Protect all the hospitals in the East San Gabriel Valley and the San Gabriel Valley and all the nursing homes. And after this, these both crises are over. Heavenly Father, help our city to come back stronger than ever and help all our residents to encourage one another in this time of dual crisis. Father, from the blessing of the Jewish priests of all in Numbers, Chapter 6 in the Old Testament, the Lord bless you and keep you, West Covina. The Lord make His face shine upon you. Grant you His shalom peace. In America, America, God shed His grace on thee and crown thy good with brotherhood. From sea to shining sea, I bless you, West Covina, and I bless you, America. God bless America and God bless our blessed city of West Covina. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And councilman, okay, councilwoman Shoemaker, would you please?
Sure. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Have a seat, please. And Assistant City Clerk, would you please have a roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Good evening. Councilman Costellanos?
President.
Councilman Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Here.
Mayor Proten Lopez Diado?
President.
Mayor Wu?
Here. Okay, thank you so much. And that will go to the city attorney. Have any?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I heard some echo. Would you please turn off your audio? Okay. Now?
Turn it off. Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, and now we're moving to the presentation. Okay, and I think this is something very important. It's kind of good news when we have facing a lot of obstacle currently our nation and our city. But this celebration of our class 2020 is something so important. And our West Covina City Council want to invite all the graduate of Class 2020 studying with Covina Valley Unified School, with South Hill High School, for their presentation, for their magnificent achievement. And then at next meeting, we will have West Covina Unified School with their high school, with their presentation for all the graduate have a chance to be recognized by the city council. And then following, okay, next city council, we will have Roland Unified with our Longgalls High School, with their graduate, okay, to have a chance to present, okay, their video and to celebrate achievement. I think this is important. And today, I want to thank the South Hill High School graduating class of 2020. And we are going to have our Mr. Matt Le Duke, the Director of Activity, say a few words. And then we are going to have some presentation for this magnificent, okay, youngster, our future. And we just want to celebrate with them. Let them know, okay, even this, okay, they have a normal time. They don't have their regular, okay, ceremony. But the city, West Covina, 120,000 population, we very proud of them. And we want them know and tell city, okay, celebrate with them, with their achievement, and the sky is the limit for them. So go ahead, okay, Mr. Le Duke, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you, city of West Covina, for honoring our graduates this year. It has been filled with some obstacles, as you mentioned earlier, but our seniors really are resilient in so many different ways. And we, as a staff, strongly believe they're going to be stronger in the future due to this crazy pandemic and the way that the world has thrown so much at them. They really have been strong through this process, and we're extremely proud of South Hills. Last night, we were able to host our virtual graduation that was paired with messages from our staff members, alumni, community members. And it really was a night of celebration. And so following last night, having this opportunity to be presented with more recognition for these seniors that deserve it so much. We just, we as a school are so thankful. And to our seniors and to the class of 2020 from all schools, congratulations. Way to get through this, way to get through high school and this pandemic at the same time. And we're extremely proud of our South Hills students. And we hope you enjoy what we're able to put together in the coming videos and slides.
So waiting for the video, right? Oh, great. And do we have audio?
There's still no audio.
There's no audio. Can you redo it again so we can have his?
They're working on it. Matt, maybe you can ad lib. Did you say that you wanted Matt to ad lib?
Well, maybe try to fill in the words since we don't have audio.
Um, well, I can just speak to, I know the images and the presentation was going to be some of our seniors sitting at different senior functions and cheering at different senior events, as well as our choir was singing "Keep Holding On", which is a kind of a positive uplifting song. So those are the two major components of our presentation part.
Well, it's important. They're going to, that defeats the whole purpose of seeing the?
Yeah, just waiting for the audio. And quickly, how many graduate from our South Hill High School this year?
Yes, thanks for asking. This year, we are fortunate to have 100% graduation rate, which keeps our tradition up of being able to meet that the past few years. And we had 381 graduates this year.
Wow, 381, okay.
Yeah, 381. And they really were a special class. They went through a lot, especially this year, but through all four years. And we really have kind of deemed them in our eyes as a staff as just our most resilient class to ever come out of South Hills. So extremely proud of them and the work that they've done to achieve this. But we also know that they have great futures. We have many going to high universities, Notre Dame, Stanford, USC, Berkeley, just to name a few. So we're extremely proud of our graduates.
Oh, this is really good. So how many percentage are our students from South Hill going to college? Like 60%, 50%, 70% this year? This is top?
Our full data hasn't come through, but we're aiming somewhere in the 70% tile going to college. And there's still kids that are still kind of debating what that next step looks like, whether it's workforce, military, or going to community college or four-year universities.
That is very good, okay. Both of my kids graduated from South Hill High School about four, five years ago, okay? So, and I know it's a?
We know that. And we know you have some roots there, so we always appreciate your support, Mayor.
Yep, and I live not too far away from your high school. It's walking distance. So I understand how important and I see all the kids, okay? And I think this is something we're so proud, we're so proud of them that they're moving to another level, okay, of their life and adulthood, okay? And chasing the dream. And the important thing is, okay, the sky's the limit for them.
Absolutely. And we are hosting another graduation celebration on Thursday for our seniors, where they'll be doing a cap and gown parade through our campus, taking pictures from social distancing and really just trying to celebrate them because this is just so unfortunate that they don't get a typical graduation. But we're also optimistic that someday soon in the future, we'll be able to celebrate them at our district field and really do a traditional ceremony soon.
Yeah, I remember, not too long ago, it's like yesterday, we went to district field to see the graduation first, my son, and later on, my daughters, okay? And this is a full of joy for the parent and I think for the kid too. So hopefully, we can do this thing. If we can get this technical difficulty resolved, we really want to, okay, and recognize all these students, okay? I think it's important for them to know, and this will be on the YouTube forever so they can see themselves. Hopefully, they can compensate a little bit of something that they missed, okay? And hopefully, like you say, in the future, maybe we can, okay, and this thing, we can have people get together, so, okay, I don't know, late summertime. Hopefully, this pandemic is over, okay? But again, okay, and that's why we're trying to do everything to help those kids. So are we going to continue to wait for this? Or are we maybe to reschedule for all this presentation to maybe invite you back again? So we don't start, okay, over here? If we no audio, I don't think this is fair for the kid to see their presentations, okay? It doesn't have the music, doesn't have the thing. So how long, okay, city manager, how long it's going to take all the while? Maybe we, I'm so sorry, Matt, okay, and this thing happened, okay? I think sometime, okay, the thing happened, okay, just not our plan, okay? We all in the good cause, we want to let them know we really care about them, okay? So?
Mayor, I apologize to the school and the students, et cetera. I'd just like to bring this back because I'm not quite sure how long it's going to take to get it back up tonight, but I'd like to reschedule if I may.
So is that possible, Mr. Le Duke? Okay, we can invite you back and present this again, okay? And for next, not next, okay, next, I think next is West Covina Unified, if you don't mind? Okay, we can have you back?
Absolutely.
I'm?
No problem. We will, we will continue to, no worries. We will continue to advertise this as we get closer to the next one. Just keep us posted and we'll put it on YouTube again for our students. Thank you so much.
I'm so sorry. I apologize to all the students. I think they're looking forward to, the city want to recognize them. But it's not fair for them if we have no, okay, audio for them to see the choir, the music, and the people talking. And, okay, and again, okay, my apology to you, okay? And we will invite you and hopefully, we can do this thing again. So, okay, thank you so much. I really, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate it, okay? Okay, thank you.
Take care. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, bye.
You too. Bye.
Okay, so kids, I'm sorry, okay? But we are guaranteed to come back, okay, to have this on our, okay, presentation again for next, okay, schedule from our city. So we move into oral communication. So, okay, for that, okay, due to the current and the ongoing public health emergency, oral communication are being accommodated via email and telephone call. The Assistant City Clerk now will read the oral communication that were received by 6:30 this evening, then place telephone call for the request by 6:30 this evening. I'd like to, okay, know how many, okay, email or speaker we have on the phone tonight?
Good evening, Mayor. We have a total of nine speakers this evening. I have seven emails and two callers. The first caller is going to be Ms. Elsie Messman, and the second caller is going to be Phil Moreno. One moment, and I will bring Ms. Messman on the line.
Okay, go ahead.
Ms. Messman, you're good to go.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Elsie.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elsie Messman, a resident of West Covina. Here's a quote from the San, hello?
Yeah, go ahead. You're good.
You're live.
Here's a quote from the San Gabriel Valley Tribune. The city manager maintained the city financial situation can be attributed solely to the pandemic that happened. Yes, you can blame the pandemic for some losses in revenue, but that only happened a few months ago. With the manager's statement, how can we believe or trust him? We haven't seen the end yet with the police chief and the fire chief's lawsuits still pending, and that was the doing of our city manager. The raise of 12% for both fire and police was again the doing of the city manager, and he should have known the city had no money. Mr. Shoemaker stated that not all council voted for the 12% raise, which is true, his daughter voted against the raise, but her commissioner to the planning commission spearheaded the tax plus other goodies with the police and fire department. So maybe she didn't support the raise at the council meeting, but do you believe she didn't support the increase outside council? Or is this just a smokescreen? Also, maybe our city manager can take a decrease in pay, which is $16,307.20 per month, since he has nobody to supervise and he has farmed out most of the positions. Nobody on council or staff seem to have any idea how to generate money for the city. I'm sure the residents have some suggestions, but then again, what are we paying staff and management for? It's easier to add tax increases on our property or get a bond where they don't have to do anything. Listen to the residents and please stop spending money foolishly. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Elsie. Thank you so much. And next, please?
Mayor, I'm going to take a few minutes and call the next speaker, Mr. Moreno. One moment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, my name is Phil Moreno. I'm a West Covina resident. My subject is why we should stop using, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Why we should stop using the fire department to respond to non-fire-related medical calls for service. Up to 80% of calls for service are not fire-related. I would like each city council member to get a pen and paper and write down each fact that I'm going to give you. Number one, the city should contract with Queen of the Valley Hospital to work with an ambulance company or to staff their own ambulances to respond to West Covina non-fire-related medical calls for service. Number two, the use of a paramedic or a physician assistant in those ambulances will be agreed upon by both the hospital and the city. Number three, the number of ambulances and where they will be pre-positioned in the city will be determined by the available data from previous years called for non-related medical calls for service. Now I'm going to explain why this will save the city money. Number four, anyone 65 years or older and on Medicare has their ambulance bill paid for by Medicare. I know this because I am a Kaiser Senior Advantage Medicare Plan member, and the last time I was in an ambulance, Medicare paid the bill. Number five, anyone under 65 usually has a healthcare plan that pays for an ambulance service. Number six, if any West Covina resident does not have a medical plan that pays for an ambulance service, they can sign up for the West Covina Ambulance Year subscription plan that costs, if I'm not wrong, about $70 a year. As you can see, my idea of having a medical ambulance respond to all non-fire-related calls for service would save the city of West Covina a lot of money. That's the end of my statement.
Thank you, Phil. Okay, and thank you so much. And next, please?
Good evening, Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and read the comments now, starting with Mr. Jim Grevich.
Yeah, go ahead.
On October 15th and November 5th, 2019, several residents stood before this council and stated the city could not afford the very generous raises contained in the memorandums of understanding the city's council was asked to approve. In response, the city council immediately approved the MOU. At that time and repeatedly over the previous years, many residents have said that the city should not continually spend more than it took in because the city's reserves would disappear. On April 21st, 2020, the city council received a financial report that stated the city was once again going to spend millions over budget further depleting the reserves. The city council did not publicly respond to the issue. Management did not publicly recommend a plan to correct the situation. Labor does not seem to care about the city. They only seem to care about enriching themselves. The whole point of having reserves is to be able to respond to a genuine fiscal crisis. Now that the crisis is here, it is a dishonest to blame the coronavirus crisis. The responsibility belongs to the behaviors that led to the reserve depletion. Most people know that when they are spending more than they earn, they need to cut back. For whatever reason, this city has been unable to do this for years. So now we are in a situation where it appears layoffs are going to happen. Layoffs mean that the city is dysfunctional. A functioning city council would demand proper fiscal management. Functioning management would take whatever steps are necessary to keep spending within the budget. Functioning labor would adjust to the realities. The longer this goes on, the worse the choices get. Now the choices are simply bad. For starters, overtime for absences should stop. Yes, this means services will be reduced. If you delay, then layoffs will become a necessity. If you delay even further, then even contracting out will not be able to keep the services reasonably intact. If the city council is still unwilling to face the realities, the money will be totally gone. Employees will not get paid. The city council will be replaced with two who, with people who are willing to do what needs to be done. Please do something and do it publicly. The residents have a right to know what you think.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, next, please?
Our next speaker is Jay Meter. Hello, I am Jay Meter, a resident of West Covina. I want to thank the city council, the West Covina Police Department, and the West Covina Fire Department for a great job done by all in handling the events of the last two days. In particular, the placement of bins and equipment was effective and an example of proactive thinking. I am sure that the protests were not followed by violence and, pardon me, I am sure that the protests that were not followed by violence was noticed by many and contributes to a much-needed turning point. I have mentioned in previous comments the lack of meetings by the Finance and Audit Committee. I am very glad to notice that the committee has a meeting scheduled for tomorrow evening and hope that they are allowed to contribute to the difficult decision-making process in our future. Finally, it looks as though you have chosen a particularly difficult time to lead our city, and a lot is being asked of you. All we can ask as residents is that you put forth your best effort. Thank you, Jay Meter.
Thank you, Mr. Meter. Okay, next, please?
Our next speaker is Mr. Steve Bennett. At the last council meeting on May 19th, 2020, you voted unanimously to declare a fiscal emergency for the city of West Covina. During the decision, city manager Carney stated the condition we are in today as a direct result of losing the major reserves because of COVID-19. While the loss of revenues due to COVID-19 is a contributing factor in the financial distress of this city, the financial problems are not a direct result of the COVID-19 pandemic. They are a direct result of the decisions of this council. I will direct the city once again to the fact that this council voted on and passed an MOU for both the Police Officer Association and the Firefighters Association last October and November that included a 12% increase in pay. Several members of the community and members of the Finance and Audit Committee expressed extreme concern that the city could not afford the raises at that time. However, city manager Carney stated, "I will find the money." Well, I think it's time for Mr. Carney to find the money. I would like to point out that the city of West Covina has for decades had its own police department and fire department. This is because the residents do not want it any other way. They have expressed that repeatedly at council meetings and ballot boxes. The sentiment has not likely changed in the last few months. I suggest the city manager and the city council members take that under their advisement during this time. This council has undone previous councils' cost-saving measures and has privatized our city hall to third-party companies. This council has forced our city employees under the guise of improving the city. This council has wiped out 20% reserve to the general fund. This council is undergoing a state audit. This council has made the problems of this city worse. It is time for this council to step out of the shadows and show us the leadership you all claimed to possess when you were running for your council seats.
Okay, thank you, Steve. And next, please?
Our next speaker is Sheri Ornalia.
Sheri.
Good evening, Mayor Wu, city council members, city staff, and city officials. My name is Sheri Ornalia. I am a business agent with Teamsters Local 1932, and I represent the non-sworn safety support employees of the West Covina Police Department. I respect the financial situation the city is currently experiencing due to COVID-19 pandemic fallout. But as the city is proposing drastic cuts to employee wages and benefits, I urge everyone to keep in mind the non-sworn safety support employees have not had a cost of living raise since 2014. That's six years without an increase to their wages or benefits. Yet the other bargaining units have received cost of living raises throughout the years, and most recently, the police and fire bargaining units each receive a sizable raise. Although we've been told the city has proposed the same cuts across all bargaining units, the non-sworn safety support unit will be impacted greater than the other unit as their salary ranges are lower than the other bargaining units, and they are making the same wages they made in 2014. We will continue to negotiate with the city and look forward to coming to an agreement that is more equitable for the employees of this bargaining unit. Respectfully submitted, Sheri Ornalia.
Thank you, Sheri. Okay, next, please?
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Jerry Pachas.
Okay, go ahead.
On March 3rd, 2020, I stood at the podium and asked about a rumor I heard that the city has a multimillion-dollar deficit. The city manager responded that it was false rumor and that the city council had adopted a balanced budget. I did not ask about the budget. I asked about expenditures. Residents know there is a difference between budgets and expenditures. On April 21st, 2020, the city council received a financial report that indicated the city was still spending millions of dollars over what was budgeted. The city was apparently spending its reserves. Stop trying to blame the financial problems on COVID-19. Stop the denial. You need to do something about your deficit spending. Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Marcia Solero.
Okay, next, please?
Good afternoon. Below is my public comment to be read aloud at tonight's city council meeting. Good evening, Mayor, city council, and residents. My name is Marcia Solero, twenty-year resident of West Covina. My comment tonight is to oppose Agenda Item Number Six based on the following points. Number one, the Agenda Staff Report does not include a fiscal impact section. Exclusion of this section leads to a lack of fiscal transparency and no way for the city council and residents to assess if approval of resolutions is a fiscally responsible decision. Yes, it is implicit that the city will save money due to canceling the street sweeping contracts, but who will take on this duty? Will it be absorbed by a city department and therefore be a true cost-saving? Second, the staff report indicates that contracting with care ambulance services will reduce the need for fire department personnel and improve the city's cash flow. By how much? What is the estimate? Obviously, this Agenda Staff Report needs some attention. Attachment number three, Agreement with Care Ambulance Services, Inc. does not contain an exhibit or attachment which provides a fee schedule. As residents will be directly billed for services, we deserve to see a minimum of some type of fee range, if available, or to be provided with a source to obtain said information. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. Okay, next, please?
Our final comment is Mr. Mark Goshgarian.
Okay, go ahead.
Dear, dear sir, madam, my office represents Nationwide Environmental Services in connection with its street sweeping contracts with the city of West Covina. We are advised that the city manager, David Carney, has advised my client in writing that Item Number Six of the city council agenda will be pulled and not presented to the city council for approval. Based on this written representation from the city manager, my client's letter to the city dated May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty will not be supplemented with additional evidence and legal authorities challenging the legality and appropriateness of proposed Item Number Six. We always remain willing to discuss any and all issues with the city of West Covina in a productive and fair manner. Respectfully, Mark Goshgarian. Those are our public comments, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Okay, and we're done with oral communication. And the city manager, would you please respond some of the, um, question for our resident? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is City Manager Dave Carney. Majority of the speakers tonight were making comments and recommendations about budget matters, and that's an item on the agenda tonight. I'd like to respond to budget matters under that agenda item. Mr. Moreno had some suggestions about the way in which the city fire department should respond or not respond to certain kinds of calls with alternate ambulance provision. And I'm going to follow up with him. I'll have the chief speak with him tomorrow. The final two speakers, Marcia Solario and Mark Goshigian, had suggestions or concerns about Agenda Item Six. And I'm going to request that that Agenda Item Six be removed from your agenda tonight. I need to do some more work on that one. I think that's all I've got this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we move to, uh, city manager report. Go ahead.
Mayor, this is, um, City Manager Dave Carney again. Good evening. We're going to put up a PowerPoint presentation, and then I'll give a brief report. First, it'd be remiss of me to not make mention of the fact that this has been an extraordinarily business-busy time for the city, that demand for municipal services is way up, and there's, um, lots of things going on. I'm especially thankful that the demonstration, the, the big demonstration in West Covina yesterday was, was quite peaceful. I, um, thank the individuals who express themselves peacefully and stand with them on the important issue of justice for all. Would be remiss if I didn't especially thank our chief of police, our police department, our fire department, and all of the partner agencies that responded, ensuring everybody's ability to peacefully protest and, and for keeping everyone safe. Some pictures of the event. We've been following a series of countywide curfew orders. Um, although West Covina has been quite calm, we're, um, continuing to respect the countywide order, which was continued, uh, June second through June third. We're asking everyone to please stay home and please stay safe. We, um, continue to remain open to the public at city hall and in the new phase of countywide orders by the county health department. Um, we're in the phase where people can get haircuts, can go to the barber shop, and can do in-person dining, um, under the new guidelines. So we're going to work closely with our businesses, especially our restaurants, as we reach the portion of this where we can have in-house dining, perhaps alfresco on sidewalks or in parking lots, et cetera. We're going to help them stand that up as quickly as we can because we want them to get back, and we want to get people back to work. Um, we, we are canceling almost all community events, and I just wanted to make mention of the one that we had originally scheduled, National Night Out. We've moved it to the first Tuesday in October. And, um, just like to share a community-wide warning that all fireworks here are illegal. Safe and sane fireworks are illegal. Dangerous fireworks are illegal. We want our residents, if they see something, to say something. We've got a deployment plan coming for the Fourth of July holiday. Um, I want everyone to know, no fireworks. And we're going to be out, um, in some, in some good numbers enforcing that, and there'll be some fines associated with it. Update on a couple of projects. The Burger IM, we've issued a certificate of occupancy. We're hoping they'll get open this month. Foreign Decor is taking over the former Kmart space. They are under construction now with their tenant improvements. And that's all I've got this evening for our manager's report. Thank you very much.
Okay, and quickly, and that, before we move to consent calendar, regarding the firework, okay, and I think you know we receive a lot of complaint, okay? And I hope, okay, our co-enforcement, our police, and I know during this time it's kind of tough, but we need to enforce, okay? There is no tolerance about firework in West Covina, especially illegal, eh, fireworks going, okay, around all the places. Okay, so please, okay, and this is what, okay, our residents really concerned about that. Okay, now we're moving to, uh, consent calendars, okay? And I think Number Six has been pulled by our, uh, city manager, okay? So that one, uh, you need to work it out on the detail and numbers, okay? And then work on the, uh, with, with, with the staff, and, uh, hopefully in the future, you, you bring back. Other than that, okay, and, uh, do we, any other, okay, agenda? Any city council member want to pull? If none, then, then do I have a motion to approve Agenda Number One, Two, Three, Four, Five, and Seven? Do I have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. I make a motion there.
So I have, uh, Councilman Johnson move the motion. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Take a second.
Okay, then I have a mayor pro tem, that's you, Lopez Viado. Okay, second, and Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please?
Councilman Costalinas?
Hi.
Councilman Johnson?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Shoemaker? I'm sorry, Councilmember Shoemaker?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Lopez Viado?
Hi.
Mayor Wu?
Hi, okay, approve five zero, okay, approve Agenda Number One, Two, Three, Four, Five, Seven, okay, and, uh, five zero. And, uh, our, uh, council member Shoemaker has been promoted. So we go to the, okay, public hearing, okay? And I, I have a request, since this number, three, item number eight, nine, ten, and I, nothing changed, everything's maintained the same thing like last year budget, can we, city man, city attorney, can we combine all these three items into, uh, public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, these items were all duly noticed as public hearings were not increasing any of the amount, and there are no, uh, public comments received tonight. So we could do that, and you could do one motion depending on what the council wants to do with approving staff, or staff, staff recommendation or not. Up to the council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so, so if nobody against, okay, I'm going to combine these three, okay? Uh, okay, public hearing, I, item number eight, okay? Nine, ten for the district, number four, district number six, and district number seven. So this matter's for public hearings for setting for the assessment rate for the West Covina Landscape Maintenance District Number Four, Six, and Seven. So, and who's going to present, uh, this, okay, report? City manager?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask our Assistant City Manager, Mark Persico, to, um, present this staff report.
Go ahead. So you're going to present three, okay, district four, and six, and seven, all together? Okay, go ahead.
That is correct. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is Mark Persico, Assistant City Manager. The council, uh, will be opening three public hearings simultaneously, uh, and these are for Landscape Maintenance District Four, Six, and Seven. I'm going to briefly go through some highlights of each of the four districts. Um, the first one is District Four, which was established in nineteen seventy-five. The, uh, district covers approximately, or contains, I should say, a hundred and thirty acres of open space. Rates within this district have not been increased since, uh, for more than fifteen years, and as a result, uh, maintenance has suffered. Rates will not be increased for the upcoming fiscal year, which begins July first, um, at, uh, a month from now. And, uh, the city will be exploring in the next fiscal year, uh, looking at what it would take to properly, uh, maintain the district. And if there is an increase, any rate increase would be subject to, uh, a vote of the affected property owners. The second maintenance district, uh, Maintenance District Number Six was established in nineteen eighty. Uh, the district contains seventy-seven acres of public open space. Rates within this district have not increased since, uh, two thousand and nine, and they are not proposed to be increased for this upcoming fiscal year. Again, uh, the city will be exploring what it would take to properly maintain landscaping within Maintenance District Six. And any increase, uh, that might be necessary would be subject to a vote of affected property owners. The final maintenance district, uh, the council is looking at this evening is District Number Seven. This district was also established in nineteen eighty. The district contains approximately a hundred and thirty acres of public open space. Rates within this district, um, have increased approximately eight point six percent since two thousand and nine. Yet the cumulative rate of inflation is a little over twenty percent. And as a result, uh, maintenance in this District Seven has also suffered. Um, rates will not be increasing for the upcoming fiscal year, which starts July first. And the city will be exploring, uh, what it would cost to maintain, um, the district properly. And any rate increase in Maintenance District Seven would also be subject to a vote of the affected, uh, property owners. Um, some key points, I think, uh, to be aware of. Maintenance districts are self-funded, uh, which means that the district can only perform the work for which it has adequate revenue, which is one of the reasons that, um, maintenance has suffered. Um, on May fifth of this year, the city council received a preliminary engineer's report, um, outlining the cost of service. And, uh, on May fifth, the city council set tonight, uh, June second, as the date for the public hearing. The public hearing this evening, again, will set rates for the upcoming year for all three districts. Finally, uh, staff is recommending that the city council adopt three resolutions. Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-nine, establishing the rates for Maintenance District Four. Resolution twenty twenty dash fifty, setting rates for Maintenance District Six. And Resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-one, establishing rates for Maintenance District Seven. Again, uh, the rates would remain the same for all three districts for the upcoming fiscal year. That concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Okay, and quickly, okay, with city clerk verified, a proper legal notice has been given.
Legal notice has been given, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much, and, uh, and any question? Our city council member, okay, to what, to our Assistant City Manager regarding the report for the three districts? If none, then I'm going to move to oral commu, okay, the common, or to public. Do we have received any written or do any phone call regarding people against or, um, opposed, okay? Or, okay, a favor for this, uh, three district issue? Because everything remained the same, the same charge like last year.
We have...
Go ahead.
We have no comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I'm going to close, okay, the public comment and move back to the council discussion. So, uh, council, any, okay, uh, add, add on? Or any question, any comment regarding this, uh, three, uh, district? Okay, then in that way, by the way, city attorney, when we doing the, we need to vote on this, right? So since this is the charge for three districts, and then right now, everything keep the same charge like last year, and should we do it, uh, individually? Or can we do a bundle of all three together?
Mr. Mayor, you can do one motion if you are going to adopt the, uh, staff's recommendation to adopt the resolutions for each item.
So basically, our Assistant City Clerk, would you please read the, the item? The, I think, basically, city attorney, we can read the three items, then we can have a motion by city council. So would you, Assistant City Clerk, to read all these three legal documents? Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor. I can read all three resolution numbers. Resolution number twenty forty-nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, approving the engineer's report and confirming a diagram and assessment for fiscal year twenty twenty-one for Landscape Maintenance District Number Four. Resolution twenty fifty, twenty twenty fifty, a resolution of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, approving the engineer's report and confirming a diagram and assessment for fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one for Landscape Maintenance District Number Six. Resolution number twenty twenty fifty-one, resolution of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, approving the engineer's report and confirming a diagram and assessment for fiscal year twenty twenty-one for Landscape Maintenance District Number Seven. Those are the three resolutions.
Thank you so much. Do, uh, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, it's, uh, go ahead.
Oh, who's going to say? Okay, okay, otherwise, Councilman Cardiano, okay, want to move the motion? Who want to second?
Uh, Councilman Johnson, I'll second it.
Okay, Councilman Johnson, I'm second, and Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please?
Councilman Costalinas?
Hi.
Councilman Johnson?
Hi.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Lopez Viado?
Hi.
Mayor Wu?
Hi, and, uh, Agenda Item Number Eight, and Number Nine, and then Number Ten, regarding District Number Four, Six, Seven, have a motion approved, five zero. Now we're moving to, um, this, okay, item, okay, eleven, regarding the preliminary fiscal year twenty dash twenty twenty-one and the budget. Okay, Mr. City Manager Carney, okay, who will present the staff report?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this report will be given, um, in two parts, both by myself, City Manager, and by our finance director, Robin Berg. It concerns the coming year preliminary budget, uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Our agenda for this topic tonight is to provide an introduction and overview, to review the operating budget and all funds, to focus especially on the General Fund, revenues and expenditures, to review financial trends, to take a look at the capital improvement program. We'll then offer next steps and be available for council questions. By way of introduction, with this budget this evening, we are telling the council and telling the community what we're dealing with. We're painting a truthful picture. I think it's quite important that we not conflate COVID-nineteen issues and other issues. We're going to explain how COVID-nineteen has brought these issues into forefront. We're going to talk about the city's structural problem and the COVID problem. We're going to talk briefly about the direct and reversal cost of responding to COVID-nineteen, and especially the loss of major revenues resultant of the closure of businesses and the loss of tax revenues. We were well on our way this current fiscal year to straightening out a lot of the situations that needed to be addressed in terms of the city's finances. But as I mentioned, COVID-nineteen has brought the city's budget into sharp focus. As part of this presentation, we'll take a look at how the city was progressing through the fiscal year, show you the March year-to-date numbers, and how the city was doing with some of its initiatives and its turnaround projects. Pension obligation bonds to address the CalPERS problem, and other initiatives that seem to be working pretty well for the city, privatization of building and safety and city engineering, et cetera. I'm going to ask our Finance Director to begin with the polls. Not sure we've got the right slide on the screen. There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so the twenty twenty-one goals that Dave briefly went over, response, we first of all, want to respond to the COVID pandemic. To date, we've spent approximately seventy-seven thousand dollars on the pandemic, and most of that was for masks and sanitizers, and maybe some barricades and things like that that we needed immediately. We're expecting we will get reimbursed, I believe it's seventy-five cents on the dollar. And the second slide is achieve fiscal sustainability and financial stability. That's carried over from last year, and we hope we're going to make some progress in the coming fiscal year. We want to protect public safety, both fire and police, especially in these difficult times. We want to enhance our city facilities and our infrastructure. We want to enhance the city image and our effectiveness, and we want to engage in proactive economic development. Next slide, please. So the, before I get into the budget numbers, I wanted to first of all, go over briefly and show you a picture of the General Fund expenditures. This is through March thirty-first, it's out of our financial system, and it shows that for the General Fund expenditures, that budget versus actual, we were at seventy-six point seven-four percent, where we were just slightly over seventy-five percent, which is where we should be at that period of time, three-quarters of the way through the fiscal year. Next slide, please. The revenue assumptions that were made, we assume that we have major revenue sources. We adjusted our sales tax downward due to COVID-nineteen. It's down projected a million dollars less than in nineteen twenty. Our property tax is going to increase slightly, and that's assuming that we open our businesses up, people get back to work, they're able to pay their property taxes in these times. Our transient occupancy tax remains flat. That's probably not going to happen, I can most definitely assure you it's not going to happen, but to budget for that right now, we just didn't have a good focus on what that's going to be coming forward, because we don't know when everything's going to start moving again in the economy. Our licenses and permits are increasing to reflect rate increases.
Robin?
Was it?
Robin?
Yes.
Sorry, okay, I think need to explain to, a lot of people don't understand what's the TOT. So that is the ten percent tax from the hotel. We have a A hotel, you can explain to, okay, the resident, okay, what TOT, and we, right now, because the hotel right now has no occupancy, so we don't get a ten percent, a ten percent, a hundred percent to the city. And so I think need to explain to our, okay, resident, that that thing is, right now, it's like nothing at all due to it's no occupant come to our city, yeah, go ahead.
That's, that's correct. The transient occupancy tax sometimes is referred to as the bed tax. For people staying in hotels when you travel, there's a fee that gets remitted to the city. It's about one point eight million dollars a year for our city. And then finally, the licenses and permits, like I said, are increasing due to rate increases. Next slide, oh, you got it. Budget projections are based on status quo. It assumes that doesn't take into effect the pandemic that we're experiencing right now. We did not consider the cash flow problem at the time of this budget, and the reason for that is we were quite already in depth in preparing this budget document, and it takes so many man-hours to do this, and there were so many questions up in the air at the time that the pandemic hit, and then there were some, the county had told us they were not going to remit our property tax, so that, that's kind of, and that was in April, they were not, said to us that they were not going to remit the May payments that are due to the city. We have since received those, however, it doesn't get us out of this cash flow problem, as you'll see later on in this presentation. We decreased our fire department overtime, and no layoffs are in this budget, and we instituted a hiring freeze. Moving on from there, we'll just get into the high-level budget. Revenues are equal to expenditures in the General Fund. I have to caution you, however, it's with one-time solutions. So the two thousand eighteen bonds, for example, are about one point eight million a year. Those get paid out of the General Fund. Those were to consolidate, they were refunded in two thousand eighteen for the two thousand twos, the two thousand fours, and the two thousand thirteen bonds, I believe. There's some money in the debt service fund right now. Usually, we transfer the money out of the General Fund, put it into the debt service fund to make those payments. There was some fund balance there, some, some extra funds that had accumulated over time, and that's about a million dollars, so that saved the General Fund a million dollars, but it's one-time in this fiscal year. Was there a question? No, okay. This budget includes ninety sworn police officers and sixty-seven sworn firefighters. And again, fire overtime was reduced from two point one million to seven hundred and eighty-three thousand in the current year, or in the new year, I guess I should say. It also reduces management and management support positions, and just to give you an example, both the management, in my office, the accounting manager and the purchasing manager are vacant right now. Those will remain vacant. And Jeff Anderson's position, Community Development Director, is, Jeff recently retired, and we're not going to replace that position. Our Assistant City Manager, Mark Persico, will be in that role. Next. So we're looking at, again, a very high-level operating budget for all funds. This first slide here, total revenues by fund type are one hundred and seventeen million, three hundred and one, seven eighty-six, with the General Fund making up fifty-seven percent of that, and our special revenue funds, twenty-one percent. You'll notice on this chart and the next chart that the capital project funds say zero percent. They were not factored into this, and when you get your final budget, I will revise these charts to include those funds. Next slide. The expenditures by fund type are one hundred and ten thousand, eighty-one, one hundred and ten million, eighty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-four, again, with our General Fund being the largest piece of that at fifty-nine percent, and special revenues of seventeen percent. Next. And the citywide comparison, next slide, Mark. The revenues versus expenditures, this is just showing for all funds, the revenues in the blue and the expenditures in the orange color. And then the next slide is major revenues, which is our property tax at forty-one percent, and our sales tax at twenty-four percent, making up sixty-five percent of the General Fund budget. And you can see that the blue, which is the revenues, doesn't even pay for public safety, so all the other revenues that come into the General Fund have to make up that difference. We're going to move on now to the General Fund. And for this twenty twenty-one year, our General Fund revenues are sixty-six million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, two thirty-six. Our property tax and sales tax is sixty-five percent of that, and the, the most, the next biggest piece is the other taxes, which is our TOT tax, our franchise taxes, and things like that. Next slide. This just shows our property taxes and shows you what a stable source of revenue this is for the city. It, we show it going up slightly in twenty twenty-one. And then we come to our sales tax revenue, and it's another very stable source of revenue. However, due to the uncertainty this year of when the businesses will be reopening and when that money starts flowing back in, it's been severely decreased in the last couple of months. So we reduce that by a million. We're going to keep a close eye on this, and if we need to, we will come back and revise these numbers. And the next slide just shows that your revenues and your expenditures for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year are proposed to be equal. On the expenditure side, you can see by this chart that the fire and the police makes up seventy-seven percent with public services being, or, I'm sorry, the support services being the next largest piece of that. And then this slide shows seventy-nine percent of our General Fund budget is made up by salaries and benefits, with maintenance and operations only being twenty-one. And this slide shows for numerous years how our fund balance has been declining, and you can see with the dissolution of the redevelopment funds, that drop in thirteen fourteen, and then we started to go up, and then it, and it kind of went down, and it's been wavering for the last several years. This is the cash flow analysis that's been done, and it goes from June twenty twenty through December. The top line on this chart shows the revenues that we expect to get in. We did that based on reductions in sales tax and looking back over past several years to get kind of an average of what we get in monthly. Then the payroll, we moved on to the expenditures on the next several lines. Payroll shows, you know, it's about three point five million a month. On July and December, you notice that it's five point one million, that's because there's three payrolls in those months. Then there's the JPIA payment that's usually due July first, and I haven't moved it over on this chart, but we're going to be paying half in June and half in January, so that'll adjust this cash flow a little bit, but the ending number still ends up the same. Our per's unfunded liability is one point one two five per month, and we're assuming that we'll issue the pension obligation bonds by September, so we should be able to only have to make those two payments and not twelve during the fiscal year. And then I have an interest payment due in, well, it's due in August, but we pay it in July for five hundred and fourteen thousand, that's for the eighteen bonds, and then the warrants, we just took an average. So we figured out what those expenditures are. I'm sorry? I can't make out what he's saying.
No, continue.
There's nothing?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought I heard some, someone talking. So then the last lines, the current cash balance starts off at twelve point eight million, and we take out the monthly, the revenue minus the expenditures each month, and you can see in this chart that in September, the city goes negative cash. And then it takes all the way to December, when we get our property tax in, to go back a little bit positive. And then we're going to move on to the capital improvement program, and I'm going to ask Mark Persico to give a report on that.
Yes, thank you, Robin. Yes, this is Mark Persico, Assistant City Manager. Cities typically do a five-year capital improvement program, and capital improvements are larger expenditures that have a multi-year life. We also have a list of unfunded projects. We've broken the projects out by categories, buildings, which are pretty self-explanatory, general, which can be, infrastructure, I'm sorry, IT, infrastructure, new computer systems, those type of expenditures, parks, regional projects, such as we've got a improvement proposed for Azusa Avenue, which would run north and south from the two-ten freeway to the sixty freeway, going through multiple cities, sewer projects, streets and sidewalks, the city's done recently a number of paving projects, those would be under those traffic signals, and then vehicle replacement. So the first year proposed list of projects, if adopted, would total about eleven point one million dollars worth of capital improvements in the first year, and there is in the budget book Excel itself, a list of each of what those projects would involve.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay, and I remember last time I asked a question regarding, I don't know they including as a capital improvement regarding the Shadow Oak, the bathroom, they've been talking for ten years, supposedly before you guys, okay, onboard, and that the previous Assistant City Manager told us, they tried to find the budget to get this, okay, Shadow Oak, though, the bathroom project, to get, okay, so the much easier for residents to use. I don't know, is including this capital improvement? And I remember last time I asked the trans tax, regarding the same question, they said they would check it.
That is correct, yes, Mayor. It is not on the funded list of projects, unfortunately. It is a fairly large expenditure, and given the amount of revenue that we generate, we have scheduled, in the draft that we're presenting to the council, at least I should say, we are showing a replacement of one playground at parks throughout the city, one playground per year. In this first year, we do have an accumulation of some funds, so we're able to do more than a single playground in the first year. But the project, I can get you the detail. That Shadow Oak Park bathroom project is a quite expensive project, so it is on the list, but we have not yet identified a funding source.
Okay, I think this seems, okay, for four years, four and a half years, so I'm on the council seat, and we talk about this project almost every year, okay, every time, and they told us we are going to do it, and, but then the budget has been increased every year, okay? And they told us we are going to do it and, uh, but then the budget has been increased every year, okay, meaning the cost. So, and at first it, it's just, uh, pre, preset, rebuild, uh, a bathroom and put over there. The only thing is the sewer, so, but, but they become very expensive. I don't know why. Okay, so, so, and this is, I think this is approved project and for a long time. And, and I think this is something we promised to resident on the south side. It's not a new, new project. This is a very old project and it just never ever, okay, have been, okay, taking off, okay? So, so I think, uh, okay, I didn't, I, I don't know what kind of, we using the measure, measure H or major M, okay? Or some, okay, gas tax, some kind of, okay, restricted fund or park fund, something to find the funding. And that's why I remembered previously and, okay, they want to do it. So, anyway, would you please look into it and see maybe they can bring back next time when we talk about capital improvement? See that this thing, okay, can be including and they'll find the, find funding source. Last time, I think they find something, but they have a difference. So, let's, I remember we'd be chasing this from five city council previously back in two thousand seventeen, eighteen. Okay, and, uh, so, so maybe you can look into it. Okay, continue, please?
Yes, yes, we can, Mayor. Um, that really concludes my presentation. Um, I'd be happy to, uh, answer questions that, uh, council members have.
For capital improvement or for everything?
Uh, for capital improvement. Robin now has, uh, a couple of additional slides that she's going to, uh, to talk about. But my portion, if the council has no further questions on capital improvement projects, I'll now turn it back over to Robin.
Any council member have any question for capital improvement? Otherwise, we move on back to our finance director? None? Okay, Robin, go ahead.
Uh, just Mayor?
Okay, go ahead.
Just a quick, just a quick comment. I, I'd like to thank city staff for all the streets that have been paved recently. We've, uh, been able to get a lot done there that wasn't done in recent years. So, I'm looking forward to having that part of our capital improvement program continue. And that's all for now.
Very good. Thank you, Councilman Casiano.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Johnson? Yes.
Councilman Johnson, go ahead.
I'd like to ask Mark, I know a few years back, I know that when, uh, the mayor and I was on the council as well, we sold Sunset Field. That, and that money, when we discussed it, that money was gonna go in, it has to go into the parks. And they said that money was gonna be, we planned on that money going towards the Shadow Oak Park. I'd like to know where do we stand on, uh, the Sunset Field, uh, money from the Queen of the Valley Hospital? Any idea?
Good question, good question.
They, yes, they are, um, they did, excuse me, Queen of the Valley, uh, eminent health did submit their, uh, application to actually, uh, build the parking structure in the first phase of their specific plan. Um, as part of that project, we are working with them on the escrow. Um, escrow has not yet closed, obviously. Um, and yes, you are correct, uh, Councilmember Johnson, those funds are dedicated for, uh, additional park improvements. And that certainly might be a, a funding source, uh, to look at. We are hopeful that, uh, that escrow will close, uh, within the next, uh, six months.
Yeah, I, I want to thank Councilman Johnson, remind me about this exactly. And let, let's, okay, so, uh, park, that money have to go only restricted to the park improvement, okay? And, uh, Councilman Johnson, you want to say something? Go ahead.
This is Councilwoman Schumaker, um.
Go ahead.
Councilmember, uh, sorry, my dog decided to interrupt this time. Um, part of having to do a meeting at home. I believe the funds aren't for park improvements. I thought the funds were to purchase additional park land. So, before we, uh, make that statement, can we just double check that?
Exactly, okay, and, uh, uh, Mark, would you please double check? Okay, what?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, while we, okay, when we get this fund, and another thing, remember last meeting we have, okay, it's four one approved. I, I decline, I object about, because I don't believe they will close thirty day. And this is already, I don't know, four months or five months passed, okay? And then, and that they still not closing escrow, okay? I, I know eminent, eminent is, uh, health is very important to us, is number one employee, um, employer of our city. But they, they, they say, okay, thirty day, they need to, they will close escrow, cross my heart, okay? But now we still haven't seen our money. So, we need to let them understand, we help them, we support them hundred percent. But they need to, okay, and, uh, deliver their promise regarding closing escrow and give us that fund. So, at least you can, okay, designate that fund into the proper channel, pu- purchase additional parcel or if we can move to park improvement. So, at least we have a, okay, this thing move on, okay, and construction, okay? And any other city council have any other question? Otherwise, I want to move back to Robin? None? Okay, uh, Robin, please?
Okay, so, um, going forward to wrap up this presentation, next slide, Mark. Um, the next steps that the city council has is to monitor, um, not the city council, the city staff, I'm sorry. Uh, monitor revenues and expenditures timely and make the necessary adjustments to the budget. Um, with so many uncertainties this year, um, I think this is especially important, um, to keep up on, on this and, and alert the city council very early when we see things, um, not turning out the way that we expected. We're gonna continue to monitor the cash flows of the general fund and I will report those, um, to the city council as quickly as I get them. I will, um, I think we need to prepare a plan to resolve the general fund structural deficit and replenish our general fund reserves per our city policy. Our reserves are projected to be at fourteen percent at, um, year end and our policy requires us to be at seventeen percent. Um, and if we're not, we need to, uh, come up with a plan so that we do replenish those reserves. We want to shift from reactive to preventive maintenance and, uh, adopt alternative dispute resolution methods. Um, that is, you know, our interest-based bargaining where as we continue to negotiate with all of our groups. Um, we want it, want to, um, do it with the least, um, animosity as we can. And then, um, we need to adhere to our adopted budget policies during the year and, um, quit doing, um, budget adjustments, um, and, um, stick to our budget. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay, uh, council member, any person want to start the first question? Go ahead. Who want to do first? Don't be shy, go for it. There's a lot of information. So, who has a question? I, I know this is a. Within my report.
If no one's gonna jump, then I will.
Okay.
Okay. I know you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I know this is the preliminary budget and I apologize because I forgot most of my notes in my office to be specific page numbers. Um, one of the things I noticed is animal control, I believe, showed that expenditure is going from six hundred thousand to a budget of nine hundred and twenty-one thousand this year. And so, I just wanted to.
Jessica, this is the page, page number, number sixty-seven, and I have a next question too. Page number sixty-seven for the animal control, why go up so much? Go ahead. Yes?
Okay, perfect. That will make it easier.
Um, uh, you might recall, um, that during the second quarter financial report, we did a budget amendment. And, um, those costs, we, we adjusted, they came in higher from last year's budget. So, um, we're just going on, um, with those. And I know that, um, Assistant City Manager, Mark Persico, has been in contact with animal control and he might have a better explanation than I do. But, um, I know that the budget last year was, um, underfunded.
Well, and, um, that's concerning to me because, uh, the previous council made the change and the final change happened last year from, uh, L.A. County Animal Control to, uh, Inland Valley S P C A because it was supposed to save money and there was a lot of concern, uh, that it was not going to. And so, um, I don't recall off the top of my head how long our contract is, but we may need to start looking at, um, changing back to L.A. County or what we can really do to, um, get them back under control in terms of what's quoted as the cost of going to be.
And, and I think I can make it worse before it gets better. Um, if you look on page fifty-one, the revenues, um, were budgeted in the previous, um, fiscal year for four hundred and forty thousand and they're down to sixty thousand going forward into twenty-twenty-one. I need to adjust that adopted budget, or the adopted budget was four forty. We're gonna get about sixty thousand dollars in in fees this year and it's way down. And I know it triggered, um, alarm for me. And, uh, we did look, um, at talking to the county again. And I know that, um, we, we, we're, we're looking at this currently to see if we can save money.
If, if I, if I may.
Yeah, because. Go ahead.
Um, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Um, yes, as, as, as Robin has indicated, um, we are back in discussions with the county about, uh, what the cost of service would be to go back to the county. Um, the contract, um, has an offset for, we get credit, I should say, for the number of licenses that licensed animals within the city of West Covina. Um, it is that license revenue that is, uh, as Robin has pointed out, down very significantly. It was estimated at a little over four hundred thousand dollars and it's coming in at, um, not even twenty percent of that. Um, so, we're simultaneously talking to, uh, Inland Valley about, uh, steps that they can take to increase revenues. Um, it, so we are all on the staff's side, very focused, just like the council is, about the, the cost of that service. So, we are exploring multiple options.
So, basically, yeah, there's a half million dollar deficit, we still continue to go with Inland, Inland Empire, right? Based on you just.
Inland Valley, yeah. A- and I don't believe that, um, we are down that many animals in the city of West Covina. I know there's been a lot of chatter on social media about where to renew, how to renew, haven't gotten a notice and things like that regarding licenses. So, um, that may be part of the issue is that people don't know where, how to do it. And Inland Valley needs to be doing a better job because that's a significant cost. Um, my next question was the estimate for the Prop A exchange. Um, we have it, I, if I recall correctly, as keeping it pretty level. And I'm just wondering if you have any concern at all about, you know, cities in our, um, in our predicament and all cities feeling the financial crunch that we won't have the same ability to sell those funds? I mean, sell the, do that exchange?
So, I've already, um, been in contact, um, it's Foothill Transit that we exchange those funds with. And they have said that they are, are interested and will be purchasing those funds again this year.
Okay, at the same rate?
Yes, the same, the same amount, it's, um, one point six five zero.
Perfect.
Million.
And then, uh, um, the higher rate, um, for building permits, is that estimate based on the higher amount of fees we're charging? Or do you believe that we are going to have more people filing for permits or is it a condition thereof?
Uh, if I, if I may, Councilmember Schumaker, I think it's a, there are two explanations and you've kind of hit both of them. One is with the, uh, fee adjustment that the council approved, if the, uh, revenue split between us and the vendor has increased or improved, I should say, in the city's favor. And yes, we do have, uh, a very active code enforcement, uh, division now operating within the city. And they are, uh, very aggressive in finding owners that are, uh, doing work without permits. So, that is happening. And we're also hearing from residential builders that, um, they, even with the current pandemic, they are very bullish on the housing market, um, here in West Covina. So, we do think there will be, uh, still a strong housing market.
Okay, and then, um, my next question is, uh, there is no number in the proposed budget for legal services under risk management. And I believe our actual for nineteen twenty was about one point two million. Can you explain, uh, why that is?
Sure, so, um, beginning July one, uh, the city's transitioning over to the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority. And, um, they will be, um, providing, uh, the legal services for, um, the, the claims that we have. Uh, so that's why it, um, is decreasing, um, going forward. It's part of our fees.
Okay.
That we, that we pay to the joint powers insurance.
That's great. That explains why there is no number there.
If, if I may.
And again, yes, go ahead.
Jessica, if I may.
Go ahead.
Um, I think it comes at a price because the city, as a condition of membership, had to give up, um, some, some timeframes. So, claims have to be filed in a more timely manner. And the J P I A is taking control over the management of those. And so, they're gonna expect of us that we stand up and do a much better job of being good risk managers. And we've got a long to-do list of best practices that they're gonna insist we complete within eighteen months. But they will be, um, much more engaged in the, in the overall management of our claims than, than the bicep, uh, model which we previously followed.
Okay, and then, let me see, um, the other question I had actually had to do with, um, the nationwide contract. And so, um, I'm, it kind of relates to the budget. Um, you know what, let's wait for that item to come back or further discussion. I believe we'll probably discuss it next week. Um, so, it, it just, uh, somebody needs to refresh themselves on penalties for violating, uh, the permit process. Basically, not having street sweep going in, what happens, what are the penalties for not catching everything we need to catch? So, um, that.
Certainly, we can return with that. There's another aspect of that that we wanna be addressing if we can, which is the, the cleaning of the catch basins. I mean, we've got a lot of catch basins, look like they've got corn crops growing out of them. So, that's an, also an area where we need to pay a lot more attention to, to stay ahead of, um, the regulatory.
Yeah, because I believe the penalties are pretty big. So, um, we'll come back to that one. Um, I think those are all of the questions I can remember for right this second since I forgot my book at my office. And those are just my handwritten quick notes. So, if I think of anything else, I'll come back on. I'm sure now that I've broken the ice, other council members have questions.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Schumaker, but you are going to have this budget again tomorrow night. You are in the order and finance, okay, commi- commission. So, you're gonna.
I like you.
I love you so much, okay? So, I like your number. And, uh, you are extremely into the detail. So, any other council member, you want to have a question, please?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Johnson?
Go ahead, Councilman Johnson.
You know, I was looking also, uh, basically on the same page that Councilmember Schumaker was. If you go down to forty-three twenty-one, it says vehicle impound fee.
Which, which page was that?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's on page fifty-one, same one. Down on forty-three twenty-one. Well, nineteen and twenty, you, we had eighty-five thousand and you're only estimating, uh, sixty thousand for, uh, twenty and twenty-one. I was wondering why such a big difference?
I, I'm still not sure what page you're on. Is it on the schedule of expense?
Well, on page fifty-one, it's on the same page that, uh, Council, uh, Members Schumaker was talking about the animal control and, and those.
Okay, I'm with you now. Forty-three twenty-one, vehicle impound fee?
Sixty-seven, sixty.
Uh, yeah, vehicle impound fee, you know, we had eighty-five thousand and now we're only predicting sixty thousand because we're not stopping as many cars and finding out we have illegal drivers or, uh, no insurance. we have illegal drivers or, or no insurance. Why is that?
I, I think the reason, um, that I put that, um, down is based on what we've, um, received so far this year and trying to project into next year. It doesn't look like we're gonna get the eighty-five thousand this year.
Okay, I, I, I was just curious. Is that, uh, to find out from the chief on, is that because we're not stopping as many vehicles? Or why is it that for some reason, if you look at the years past, most of it's been up there? Is it because, like I say, we're letting more illegal drivers drive without insurance and stuff like that? I, I was just curious why. You can give me an answer, and I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other question? Any other question? Is that, okay. Any other city council member have a question?
No, I, it, this is a, oh, go ahead.
Okay, Mayor Proton. Mayor Proton, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, um, you know, I, I know, uh, thank you, Robin, for, um, I know how many days and nights you were working on the budget. But this is a preliminary budget. And, um, you know, this is gonna go to the Audit Committee. So thank you, Councilmember Shoemaker, and then as well as Councilman, uh, Castellano, uh, they'll be working on this. And this is also, uh, will be out to the public to do a c- community budget workshop on June ninth. So, um, hopefully the residents, you know, they also have a say on this part. So I just wanted to, uh, thank everybody, uh, working on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and, uh, any other council member question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask, how's, how's Will Dunn doing with their building and permit and building and planning, uh, permit processes? And I see we're projecting, what is it, an extra, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand in revenues?
If, if I may answer that question, uh, Councilmember, um, yes, permit revenues, um, for, excuse me, for this month are up even with the, um, closure, well, not closure, but the limited access to City Hall that we've had. So we are seeing an increase in both permit activity and revenues. So we think that that, uh, upward trajectory is going to continue.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, so any other question we have? Okay, and if not, then I have a, um, okay, quick question. I don't know if it would be quick, but, okay, um, how, okay, we know we receive our, um, property tax is April and, uh, November, right?
Yes, we, well, we get the biggest piece, um, in May and, uh, in December and January. So it's April, May, December and January. We get some pretty big chunks.
So, so right now, uh, in April, we receive, okay, finally, okay, okay, uh, county gi- uh, gi- give our portion of our property, property tax income, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, so that's what in, 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 including our budget. But now, okay, so we, based on that, we, we budget into our twenty and twenty, twenty-one next year. And hopefully, and, uh, okay, we are, we are going to receive same amount. I think it's k- kinda tough because a lot of people out of the job, they, they don't even have the money to pay the property tax. And some people even delay and then without penalty based on what the state, uh, requests, okay? And due to this pandemic, the situation. And the sales tax, sales tax, how often we receive our sales tax income? Because right now, look, look like the income is our major issue due to we shut down all the businesses. And right now, we want the business reopened. Now we got this protest going on and we worry about that we shut down entire Easter mall. And there is a lot of revenue from, okay, and Walmart, from the, okay, and Target, okay, all the business over there. So, so how often we receive the, the cell tax? Okay, uh, it's quarterly or monthly?
Sales tax comes in monthly. Um, they base it on previous years. They give us, uh, what they call an advance, um, for two months. And then in the last month of that quarter, they do what, um, they call a cleanup. And they either increase the money once they reconcile it all, um, at the state level, or they have to decrease it because they've overspent, you know, they've over, um, compensated the city.
So, so monthly, we receive, uh, the, 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 the county sent to us the sales tax, our portion. And then quarterly, they, they will remove it or, okay, or, okay, compensate the difference and they give to us, right?
Yeah, they basically reconcile, the state actually reconciles it, um, quarterly.
So the, the state quarterly and, uh, to make sure, okay, we owe our number, they, they didn't show change, if they overpay us, we have to give to them. And so on, on, on this sales tax, that is going to our, how many percent of our, uh, general fund is twenty-four percent of our general fund, right?
Correct.
So, and the T O T is how many percent is our, T O T is a hotel, okay, trans- uh, transit occupant, occupancy tax. That's how we, that ten percent, I think, okay, that's why I always want to have a hotel because that, that, that ten or fifteen percent, we are, we, we keep everything. We don't have to share with any tax agency. So we can use their number. And that's, that's why Pasadena, all the city, they want to build hotel like crazy. So, and, and that with, um, how many percent is the T O T tax that we can use hundred percent? Uh, is it two percent, three percent in our general fund?
It, it's about three percent.
So three percent plus the twenty-four, twenty-five percent of our sales tax coming in monthly. And that possible, okay, we can see because right now the problem we have, the business. So, so, so in, in March, how much money we receive? And how about April? And, uh, May, have you, have we received the May sales tax, okay, come to us? So my point is, is, is like your budget is projection of our future. And right now, we look like we have, uh, unstable income that, that, like, we certainly, okay, uh, shy of a lot of, uh, major income. And then.
So the, the sales tax that came in in May was, um, slightly less than six hundred thousand. It usually comes in, and it, and it varies by month, but it's one point two to one point six million, uh, a month. And this last, um, month for May was, um, just slightly less than six hundred thousand.
So normally, we should get one point two million dollar sales tax, one point how much?
Usually, yeah, between one point two and one point six, it varies.
So we basically fifty percent down on our sales tax?
Yes, for that month.
I, I think the point to be made is these are uncertain times we're in. And, and the revenues as a result are uncertain. We're gonna have to be very good monitors of that.
So, so, so that is what, uh, we, the cash flow problem you have, uh, due to, okay, in March, we missing half months of, uh, sales tax. And then, okay, follow up with nothing about T O T tax. And then, okay, in April, we shut down, okay? And then with May, and in June, right now, we want to have pieces coming back. Now hopefully, okay, we don't know how much because I think it's very difficult for you to predict our sales tax income. How you, how you, okay, how, how, how you get a number? I'm just curious. How you get this budget number, projection, okay, for, for, for these coming months?
So, um, part of that is done by our consultant, H D L, who, um, they're experts in, in sales tax and property tax. So we took, um, their, um, recommendations and, um, had several discussions with them. And, and they have discussions with, uh, the state and that's their best guess at this time. And we will continue to monitor that and, um, let you, you know, know, once the budget is in place, we'll, um, look at that and alert the council as soon as we know that there's gonna be a dip and we might have to make some tough calls on reductions in expenditures again.
Okay, okay, got it, okay. And, uh, since these are preliminary, uh, budgets, I, okay, they have, uh, some of the number. So I have a couple of questions, okay, like the animal control. Like, for example, I think I asked about, um, why, uh, on the city clerk, their, their budget increased, okay, almost double, um, on the, okay, clerk, okay, city clerk department?
So, um, in the city clerk's budget this, um, coming fiscal year, we added, uh, two hundred and eighty thousand, I believe, for, um, the election that's coming up?
Don't, November?
Yes, correct.
So we, so we have to spend, okay, got it. Okay, the election, then city have to pay quite a lot for the election on the twenty twenty, the big ele- election. So that is what this, okay, about. And, uh, and regarding the, let me see, okay, uh, okay, quickly, on the special event. Look like this year, we have, uh, no event, but why we still have increase on the budget for, okay, let me see. Let me see, uh, special event to, I think we have almost nothing of why we still have the budget at ten, ten thousand four hundred oh seven.
Do you know which page it's on, Mayor?
On page number sixty-seven.
Oh, it's on sixty-seven.
For the special event.
I'm looking. Oh, right up at the top. Um.
Yes, on the top. I'm sorry, I got to tell you on the top.
So that was, um, personnel services. So there are, um, still, we still have staff that, um, are charged to those, um, functional areas. And, um, we're assuming that they will be with us , uh, throughout the fiscal year. The only way, um, to eliminate all of that is, um, in the form of reduction in workforce.
Okay, so, um, any, city council have any additional question? Okay, and otherwise, um, I'm going to, uh, close this, okay, for the receiving file, okay? Because this is going to send to tomorrow, additional for our audit and finance, okay, and the commission to review. And, uh, and I know Jessica and Dario is going to work hard again on this detailed thing. And, uh, that's why you gotta get paid a big bucks, okay, and to work on this budget, uh, for our resident. And other than that, do I have a motion to, unless we have a, additional question? Otherwise, and, and do we have a motion to receive a file?
Mr. Motion, Mr. Mayor, I have a motion to receive a file.
Councilman Johnson to move the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second it, Mr. Mayor. Uh, there you go. Letty could, uh, second it. And Jessica and I can discuss further tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much for your service, okay, for tomorrow night. Okay, and, uh, okay, Mayor Proton, Letty Lopez Viado, and, uh, I have a second. Do I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Castellano.
Hi.
Councilman Johnson.
Johnson? Lloyd?
Councilman.
Lloyd, Lloyd, you there?
Lloyd? Hey, Lloyd? But we lose, uh, Councilman Johnson. Okay, and, uh, let's move to, uh, next roll call, okay? There will be.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, and since, uh, Councilman Johnson, he's the person moved the motion, I think his vote would be yes, he moved the motion. And city attorney, can I?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm back now. I'm back. I, uh, my motion is, I mean, it is, yes, I'm voting yes. Everything I hear, hang up button.
So, so, and your vote is?
Yes.
So the motion approved five zero. Okay, thank you so much. And, um, this will continue, will be discussed at our Audit and the Finance Commission tomorrow night, okay? And, uh, and, uh, okay, and thank you, Councilman, okay? And Castellano and the Councilmember Shoemaker will help us continue to work on this budget. And hopefully, and I think next we'll be go to public to workshop. So we have a public input. Okay, again, this budget is taxpayers' money and it's find a way and to contribute and to make sure we have, uh, for all the, uh, the numbers and the people feel comfortable. So we can move on for our twenty twenty-one budget. And then we move on to A B one, two, three, four conference. Of course, we don't have. Then we move on to any council member comment, or mother may I? And do I have any council member want to speak? Go ahead.
I do. This is Mayor Proton Lopez Viado.
Oh, Mayor, yeah, go ahead.
Um, well, we received, um, a resident put in a public record request to have staff and council, you know, use their time to gather all information regarding P P E, donation, mass, estimated value, et cetera, during the whole pandemic shutdown. So if we're forced to do this, we might as well take advantage in recognizing all the donors, organization, local residents and groups who stepped up and donated these items that was given to like the hospitals, the senior centers, the vulnerable, and then open it up to all, uh, residents in our city so that the community can be protected during this time. Um, it's probably one of the reasons why our confirmed cases are so low in our city. But, um, they deserve recognition and I'd like to, um, honor them during our council meeting when we start meeting at the cham- chambers. So, um, I'd like to request the city manager to please invite them all since you would already have that information so that we could thank them for uniting and helping our community and showing the residents that they do care and we're all working together. So, um, thank you for that. And that, you know, residents did appreciate that. So thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Mayor Proton.
Be happy to do that. Those people were, were quite generous. We'd be happy to get that scheduled.
Perfect, thank you.
Very good, okay. Any other council member, any comment? Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll make a comment. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'd like to, yeah, regarding our restaurants, I, well, I was really excited for when the county and state orders were being lifted and then, um, demonstrations kind of sidetracked us. But, uh, once everything gets back to normal, I'd like to request our city staff to move forward with, um, kind of like what other cities are doing. They're calling the Al Fresco Initiative, um, where our restaurants, especially like on Glendora, but really anywhere in the city that we could accommodate this, um, allow them to use sidewalks, parking spaces, and facilitate in, in every way, shape and form, uh, their ability to make money and get us on our way back to recovery. So I, I'd like for that to, I don't, I don't wanna make it a mother may I. I just want our staff to expedite that as quickly as possible. Um, I might make, you know, I'll make a mother may I to, that we stop using the term mother may I. I'd rather call it council member's request. Um, and the final comment I'll make is, uh, I, I'd like to thank our police chief, all, all the guys out there and girls and dispatch and our fire department, all the, all the other agencies that helped us, C H P, Covina, uh, and everyone going through this difficult time with us, both the city hall and the residents of our city. I'd like to thank everybody for, you know, do- doing their best and getting through this tough time with us. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much, Councilman Castellano. And, uh, any other city council member want to?
Um.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman Johnson.
I also wanna, uh, create a tape with, uh, Councilman Castellano, that's about with our police chief and our fire department. You know, I was out there last couple of days up there when they're doing this, uh, demonstration up on Beranca. And I wanted to give an outstanding shout to our West Covina Police Department. They did a fabulous job. You had the, uh, highway patrol there, you, we had the, uh, Zusa, we had Baldwin Park, Covina. We have a lot of different, uh, units out there, but our police department did a fantastic job. But I'm gonna thank the chief that having thanked all the men and women of our department. Thank you so very much for the outstanding job they did. That's all.
Come, thank you so much, Councilman Johnson. Any other city council member want to share, want to say something? Uh, any requests? If none, okay, and then, and first I want to, okay, and thanks to our resident. I know everybody's very worried, okay? And this very tough time, we almost, okay, okay, and opened up the city with a dine, with a barber shop, with a hair dresser. So, and finally, people can get a haircut, okay, get a, a hair done, okay, all that kind of thing. And then we have this extremely unfortunate, unfortunately, situation happen to, to our nation and to, to our city and, uh, and to our business owner. Okay, I think this is something that is unexpected, okay? And, and we, we, we just want to thank all the residents united togethers, okay? And with, uh, protesters, okay, they, they really angry about the situation. They have time, okay, to share with their anger and with, uh, they're looking for the justice, okay? We all understand, especially, okay, I think all the minority and that they, they understand, okay, personally and the, the, the treatment. But, but again, okay, city is ours, okay? This is a business, is our business. They have family, okay? And they have, uh, okay, and, uh, employee and they really want to, okay, we establish, okay? They so disappointed. They so disappointed, okay, we have to shut down at six o'clock, okay? And it really, it's a, it's another hit to them. And then you can see the Islam mall and all the businesses have to close down the ball, okay, their front door. And it's really, okay, very sad situation. But again, okay, something we just have to, okay, get through it together, okay? And, uh, again, I want to thank our residents for their support and our police and fire in this tough time and show the force, okay? And, uh, and to be there to protect all the business and the resident. And now they doing the top twelve shift, okay, to make sure our residents is safe. And I think this is, uh, something we want to, okay, appreciate and precious, okay? And this is how our city is about, okay? And the, our city is full of a different demographic, okay? We have all different nationality, ethnic group, but we are our neighbor. We, we have, maybe have some political difference, but we helping each other. Uh, I think this important is the love, uh, replace the hate, to, to replace the misunderstanding, okay? And we're to cooperate together, and we can go through it. I, I think, okay, I, I went to the, okay, uh, most chapel, the ME church, okay? And talked to all those graduate, they, they have a full hope for their future. And I think our graduate, okay, and, uh, as class twenty-twenty, they have a full hope for their future. I think that's why we sitting over here spending our time, we fighting for our next generation, we fighting for our city future. We want everybody doing better. So I want to thank the city and our resident, the police and fire, and all this, all this leadership, okay, to put our cities through. We not out of wood yet, but we are starting to healing. And I think it's important, we continue to work together, okay, continue to love your neighbor, continue to help each other, okay? If anybody need help, please help them. And if you need assist from the city, please call your five city council and your city manager and all the staff. And we are all willing to help, we are our neighbor. We brother sister, we are going to get through this together. Other than that, do we have any other comment? Otherwise, I want to have a move the mo- of the motion to adjourn.
I'll motion to adjourn.
I think everybody fall asleep, okay? And so I motion, so meeting adjourn, thank you so much, have a good night, stay safe, stay healthy, and see you next time. Thank you so much, okay, appreciate, good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Good luck, Mr. Mayor.